Or E to determine positions relative to matters that may be subject to negotiations, developing strategy for negotiations regarding the purchase of property.
I'll second.
Okay, Alfieri?
Yes.
Case?
Yes.
Labar?
Yes.
Neil?
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
Zuluaga?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously. So we have to leave this session and go into the other link now.
Yep.
Okie doke.
See you soon.
See.
Executive meeting announcement. So the time is now 7:06 PM and the executive session has been concluded. Will all participants in the executive session please state their names for the record? Rusty, I'll start with you.
Rusty, Neil.
Kelly Case.
Jim.
Alfieri.
Robert Zuluaga.
Suzanne Leclerc.
Dolly Riley. And then we're just waiting on our city attorneys.
We can start, Mayor Protem, with the beginning of the meeting and all.
Okay.
While he comes in.
Sure. If any person who participated in the executive session believes that any substantial discussion of any matters not included in the motion to go into the executive session occurred during the executive session, or that any improper action occurred during the executive session in violation of the open meeting law, I ask that you state your concerns now. Hearing none, the next agenda item is roll call.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Labar?
Present.
Councilmember Alfieri?
Here.
Councilmember Case?
Here.
Councilmember Neil?
Here.
Councilmember Pat?
Here.
Councilmember Zuluaga?
Here.
Thank you.
All right, if we'd like to do the pledge of allegiance, if Rob could put the flag up for us.
Rachel Wilson, by your name.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic and one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, we're going to move on to ceremonies, presentations, and appointments. And our first one is item A, appointments to Keep Woodland Park Beautiful Committee. Counsel, did you all have time to review your applications?
Yep.
I did.
Yes.
Okay. Suzanne, would you like to introduce the appointee?
Yes, I believe, I spoke with Ms. Ricketts yesterday, and I believe she should, I can't see our participants, but I believe she's here with us on Zoom. So I'll ask Rob to find her and let her in so counsel can speak with her if they desire.
I found her.
Okay.
And I've invited her in. If she would like to speak, she is welcome to. Though I need to change my screen view so that she may be unmuted. Sorry, my screen view is just... It's not showing. Let's see.
She appears to be unmuted at this point.
Okay, good. Ms. Ricketts, if you're there, you're available to speak, please do, if you'd like.
Hello, everyone. I'm Renzi Ricketts. Pleasure to meet you all, air quotes, right now, "meeting you." Thank you for your consideration into the committee.
Thank you. Does anyone have questions for her?
Is she interested in picking up dog poop?
I mean, whatever it takes to keep it beautiful. You gotta do what you gotta do.
Excellent.
Ms. Renzi, I was enjoying your fact of your zeal for recycling. And I think that's great. I did notice you talked about something called a carbon footprint. Can you tell me a little bit about what that means to you?
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, recycling has always been a passion of mine, and we, as the Episcopal Church, talk a lot about creation care and our impact in the larger picture. We have some retreats that have been held here about that, and we talked a lot about carbon offsets, so our impact on traveling or flying and what we can do to be proactive in offsetting those to make Mother Earth much happier.
Well, I just want to say that I'm a self-professed tree hugger, hiker, and at one time earlier in my life, we had some environmentalists come on our property. We had a number of acres, and they asked us if they could use it. We said yes, only to learn that they had political motivations that had nothing with taking care of our property. So I just need you to know that I take a pretty dim view of those who believe that cow farts are a threat and that a carbon footprint is something which is a concern. I don't buy it, and I sure don't want to see that sort of political maneuvering in our community. So I just want you to know that I really like your idea of recycling and your care, your desire to care for the planet. I'm not impressed with the political carbon footprint.
Counsel members, can I get a motion to appoint Ms. Ricketts to the...
I had a few questions for Ms. Ricketts as well.
Sure.
So first, Ms. Ricketts, I want to say thank you for coming back. I don't remember if you were here joining us at the last meeting, but I do appreciate all the applicants coming back a second time around since we had postponed these last time. So I just had a few questions. First, how did you hear about the opening and what made you interested in serving on the committee?
Yeah, that's a wonderful question. I just moved here in 2019, and so I'm looking for a way to just be a little bit more involved with the community, but also just realizing, like, my time commitment that I can offer. I've always been a part of different efforts through different businesses. I worked for Trader Joe's as an assistant store manager, so I got to wear those fun Hawaiian shirts. But one of my legacies that I left at the store I worked at in Kansas City was actually establishing a recycling program there. So throughout college and throughout just any type of career that I've faced, I'm like, there's just so much little work that can be done specifically with recycling, and it's just streamlining those efforts and making it easy and accessible and providing information for people. So that really has always been a passion of mine, and I've tried to figure out a way to incorporate that into just my daily life and my career and all of those things combined.
Thank you. I'm happy to hear that because we have definitely come a long ways in some of the recycling programs that we have here now, but we still have some struggles where it just doesn't seem to be cohesive or streamlined. So I was hoping, can you maybe, if you're willing to share maybe a few ideas that you have as far as how to make the recycling programs we have here, new recycling programs to implement?
Yeah, I think what's really unique is just the short time that I've been here in Teller County and in Woodland Park, I've seen the shift already happen with, we specifically use Teller County waste at our facility. So it's been, like, eye-opening to me to be able to reach out to those individuals and say, like, can you tell me about the process? Like, is this like a one-stream? Are you guys sorting it in the truck? Are you sorting it once it gets to the location? So I'm really still in the process of learning a lot about what is already happening, and I just can, want to continue to educate our businesses and our community on the simple ways to do that. And so those are some of my ideas that I have currently, but I'd love to, of course, build off of those as I get more involved with the committee.
That's great. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Any further questions?
Just real quick, what part of Kansas City?
Kansas City, Missouri.
Okay, now can I get a motion to appoint Ms. Ricketts?
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Renzi Ricketts to the Keep Woodland Park Beautiful Committee.
I'll second.
Thank you. Case?
Yes.
Labar?
Yes.
Neil?
Yes.
Pat?
Jim, you're...
Sorry, yes.
Zuluaga?
Yes.
Alfieri?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. Thank you for applying, Ms. Ricketts. Really appreciate it and think you'll enjoy your time on the board. All right, we're gonna move on to our item 3B, which is the appointment of Valerie Lundey from alternate, alternate member of the Board of Adjustments to a permanent member. And I'm going to see if she is here. She is, and I'm gonna go ahead and bring her in. And Ms. Lundey, if you would like to say anything, you're welcome to.
I don't have anything specific to say. I won't be answering any questions anybody has.
All right, counsel, are there any questions? And just for the record, Councilmember Alfieri and Councilmember Zuluaga, you are teeny, teeny, tiny specks on my computer screen. So if I, if I don't see that you wave your hand and I accidentally skip over you, just remind me and I'll come back. I apologize.
Not a problem. Please forgive us if we interrupt you as well.
That's fine. So, questions?
Yes, I have a few questions. Ms. Lundey, again, I'd like to express my appreciation to you as well for coming back to this meeting the second time around to give us time to review your application. So my first question is, if you could tell us what you see the role of the Board of Adjustments to be?
Ms. Lundey, I think you...
I got muted again. Sorry, my, this, the system has troubles with the City Hall for whatever reason. More or less a gatekeeper at some level. It's, it's like a mediator. It's if somebody has an objection, they can come in and really try to understand the process or, or why something was denied, et cetera. That's kind of where I am. I came at it from earlier experience with the board, so that's really where my head is.
Okay, thank you. My next question is, how long have you been in alternate on BOA?
Was approximately, I think it was September of last year, so it's only been a little while. I think we've had all of three meetings that actually happened and the DOLA training. Otherwise, there really hasn't been any activity.
Okay. And then you had mentioned the being involved with the comp plan and zoning changes that are coming up. I was wondering if you could share any of your ideas on that or changes that you're looking forward to seeing?
No real thoughts at this point. Quite frankly, when I saw it and read it for the first time a year and a half ago, it was, in my opinion, a little outdated, but I have volunteered for a first, second, third potential on three different citizens' representations on the plan because I think it matters to the city. I grew up in a small town. I love Woodland Park because it's a small town, and I'd hate to see it lose that.
And then my last question, so I reading through your application, you had mentioned a lot about the US Figure Skating. Are you a figure skater?
No, my daughter was a figure skater. She, I was on the board of our figure skating club when we lived in California and the CFO for the 2002 Nationals Championships that were held in LA and also on the Committee for Worlds in LA, which was in 2004, '06, something like that. Been very active. It's a 501(c)(3) organization. Our goal for our club going into that thing was that we would, it was only going to be worth it for us because at that time, individual figure skating clubs assumed all the risks associated with that. We had 9/11 three months before our event and were able to still pull off a successful one, and quite frankly, we made a million dollar profit. So our figure skating club in LA is set for life, which was our goal.
Well, thank you. That's all the questions I have.
Councilmember Neil, I see you have your hand up.
Hi, Ms. Lundey. Since you have only been on the Board of Adjustments for the period of time, you're probably not aware that I was a part of a Board of Adjustment, the first adjustment hearing for something other than a minor modification since 2012. So it's been a long time. What I learned in going through that process is that the municipal code does have many inconsistencies, and we're working to fix that, and that's part of the code review. Can you tell me how you, what thought process you would go through if you came across an inconsistency of two parts of the code that we, we missed again, even with the 2020 Comprehensive Plan and Code Review? What, if we didn't find it, how would you adjudicate, or what is the mental process you would go through to, to determine if you have two rights or, you know, two points that are opposite? They both are right or they're both wrong. How would you figure out what to do? Just kind of talk me through what you think you would approach that.
Sure, okay, Rusty. I was, I, we didn't move here until 2014, so I can't speak of anything earlier than that. It was when I retired. I'm an engineer by background, so I'm pretty anal about specific things. I've also written many, many, many multi-million dollar proposals and programs for various Department of Defense things. So I'm very aware of evaluating, okay, this is what you want, but this is not what legally you get. Okay, so I have very strict definitions of that stuff. I do believe that there are loopholes in the codes and which I was part of the citizens group on that review of the last thing. I did volunteer to do that just on my own time because I thought it was important. I wanted to know what was going on. I believe that you need to look at an individual, if an individual interprets something in a particular way, that means, at some level for me, it means that there is a inconsistency in the code potentially. There is a, there's a place for a misunderstanding. There is a place for an interpretation. I'm, I'm pretty strict about, there is, it is, it is, is either in there or not in there, and my definition, guideline, long-range, whatever, limit would be, okay, yeah, you might be able to interpret it that way, but that is not the way it was meant, although I would be perfectly amenable to hearing an argument and understanding where somebody could misunderstand something. Unless it's a shall in a, in a contract, you know, there's, anything that's a will is totally interpretable, to be perfectly honest. Shall is the only thing that's enforceable.
So do you find any value in what the, while the language might have an inconsistency, does the intent matter?
It does and it doesn't, Rusty. There, there's a place where it's like you can't always understand or interpret whatever is in a person's mind. So that's where my, my line would be. It's, 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 if the words aren't there, it's really difficult, in my opinion, to imply what you think somebody might have thought when they wrote it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Lundey. I see Councilmember Zuluaga's hand up.
Hello.
Ms. Lundey, thank you for applying for the Board of Adjustments. My question has nothing to do with that. My question has to do with your figure eight skating. We have a hockey rink over at Meadow Park, and if you have the capacity to pull strings, it'd be great to have a figure skating event there one winter to draw folks to our small town. What do you think about that?
Well, I think if I could help you, I would do it in a red hot second. I've been very active in the, I was very active in US Figure Skating in a general sense. There's actually a rule in the, in, jokingly, assigned to me in the, in the rules for how you run competitions. There you go, for US Figure Skating, but I won't go into that. There is something called the Lundey Rule, so there you go. I would be, I would be an advocate, and I know a whole lot of people in the US Figure Skating organization.
Don't be surprised if you get a call.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you, counsel. Any further questions? Seeing none, I'm going to ask for a motion to appoint Ms. Lundey to a permanent member of the BOA.
Oh, I'll move to appoint Ms. Lundey as, from an alternate member to a permanent member of the Board of Adjustments.
I'll second it.
Thank you. Labar?
Yes.
Neil?
Yes.
Pat?
Jim, you're on mute?
Yes.
Zuluaga?
Yes.
Alfieri?
Yes.
Case?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, Ms. Lundey, for your answers and your time, and thank you for volunteering for this position. We appreciate it.
No, thank...
I think I accidentally muted her right when she was saying, "thank you." I apologize. Okay, we're gonna move on to item 3C, and that will be appointment or discussion of the mayoral position, position. And counsel, is there anyone that had any questions about how we go about this process, or does everyone feel clear about what needs to be done and how we'll move forward?
Well, Mayor Protem Labar, I think the public would find the knowledge of what we've come up with this week to be very helpful. So whether Attorney Wilson wants to review that or you do, I think it would be very instructive to the people.
Absolutely. I'm gonna hand that off to our city attorney, Mr. Wilson.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor Protem. For purposes of refreshing your recollection of what's in your file manager, Michael Lawson sent you a memo on Wednesday, the 17th of February that lays out a lot of what I'm gonna cover here. This is, this area of succession for the mayor is covered in Section 3.5 of the Charter. The, that section of the Charter presents several options to the council. One is the do-nothing option, in which Mayor Protem Labar would continue to serve in her position until the first meeting following the next regular election in the municipal, in Woodland Park. The other option is to vote to fill the mayoral position. You can vote to, anybody who meets the qualifications in the community can be appointed to fill this office. It may be the mayor pro tem. You may nominate one of your own members other than the mayor pro tem, or you may nominate a third party and, and make them mayor out of the community. It's all up to you. There's no real time limit on how soon you act on this. Indeed, that's the, the essence of the no-action option, is to just leave status quo as it is, and the voters would fill the vacancy in mayor at the next election. What else do I need to tell you here?
Special election?
Yeah, if, if the, if the effort to name a mayor results in no candidate gets a majority of those voting, then you may call a special election to fill the vacancy, and that way you are not required to call such an election, but you may. The inability to appoint someone is a condition precedent, though, to your authority to call a special election to get that, get the vacancy filled. And of course...
Jeff, oh, oh, go ahead.
If you appoint one of your, all I was gonna add was, if you appoint the mayor pro tem or one of the other members of the council, that would in turn create another vacancy that you would then need to fill or that would have to be filled with a special election, I believe. As I think about it, under your charter, if, let's see, how does it work? If, if you appoint, you can appoint one member of the council to be mayor or mayor pro tem, then you could fill that vacant, you could fill somebody's vacancy, then you'd have two appointees on the council, then the next vacancy, if one were to occur, would have to be filled by a special election. That may be a bit in the weeds, but there you go. Is that clear as mud? I can go through it.
Jeff, two, Jeff, two questions. So, just to clarify, so Pete, the, the, it must follow that succession of steps, correct?
Well, yeah.
For the mayor.
You want to go to a special election, you have to first attempt to appoint, to fill the vacancy, and have that effort be unsuccessful because nobody gets a majority vote.
And then secondly, we went through this process recently, but filling a vacant council seat can still follow the normal succession of taking applications and the council voting and then go to a special election thereafter. It sounded to me like you were saying it must be a special election.
Oh, no. It has to be, no.
Okay.
And then, I understand the convention in Woodland Park is to solicit applicants to fill these vacancies. That's, I think that's a great thing to do. It's not required by law, but, so I'll tell you, that is your attorney, but, but there's no law against it either, and it's very practical.
But we can go straight to a special election or appoint and go to a special election, so, for the, for an open council seat.
You can fail to appoint and it, and then it goes to an election.
Yeah.
Jeff, I have a question for you. If the mayor pro tem is, is, just serves until the next regular election, and that still leaves us a vacant council seat, would we be able to appoint that council seat even if one of us is not appointed as mayor?
Let's see. Let me make sure I've got this, Kelly. The mayor pro tem Labar continues to serve until a mayor is elected at the next regular election. And then your question is, what, again, I want to make sure I understand your question.
Well, we, that leaves us with six, so there's a vacant seat, even if she just serves without appointment. Because she would serve as the mayor pro tem.
Right.
For a regular election. Let's say that's the scenario. We still have a vacant, we have six instead of seven. Would we appoint to fill that seat?
If you go through an election, you'll just fill it at, at the election with a nominating petition process.
How about before that time? I think that's what Kelly's...
But if we just continue as we're doing right now?
We would keep the six.
And no one's appointed and Hillary just serves?
I don't think you need to appoint to fill anything.
Okay, that's, that was kind of my question. We're still at six.
The statutes require you to fill these vacancies within 60 days or call a special election, but your charter and the voters in Woodland Park get to do things differently in Homeral City as a different process, and it doesn't box you in with that kind of timeframe.
Right. So if we don't appoint, we can't fill the seventh position?
I, I think it will be filled by the mayor election. Is that correct, Jeff?
Right, right.
And that would be...
I mean, unless, unless someone on the council ran and then made an empty seat, and then we go back to the nominating process. and then we go back to the nominating process and/or.
Yeah, I think I, I figured out my answer. Thank you for allowing me to work through that.
So I have a question for either Jeff or maybe Suzanne. If you guys have any idea and can walk us through somewhat of the timeframe that we're looking at for all of these options, understanding that we first have to attempt an appointment before we even consider an election, and what the minimum timeframes are if we go down those paths. How open do we have, how long do we keep it open for applications for appointments? What does that timeframe look like? And then, minimum timeframes if we can't reach an appointment for a special election?
Do you want me to answer, Jeff, or do you want to take it?
Why don't you start, Suzanne?
I'll start.
There's a lot of stuff in there about special elections and their proximity to regular elections and the blackout period and all that.
What I'll start by saying is that in the Charter, some citizens and some of the council may remember years ago, we had a requirement, we had to advertise for these positions for 30 days. That's no longer in our Charter. And as Jeff has said, we, there's nothing that dictates the length of how long we have to advertise. So if we decide we want to do an appointment, the council gets to decide how long they would like to put that advertisement out there and get the applications back. You guys get to set that timeframe. The special election, we, if, as long as we're not having a regular election, a regular municipal election, within 90 days, we can set the special election as council desires. We would have to do petitions, and so people would have to, just like each one of you did when you ran for council, each, each person would have to submit a petition, verify signatures, go through all that process, set a date for the council, but it couldn't be within the 90 days of our regular municipal election. Did I not, is there anything else I didn't answer?
Meaning that the election timeline has to conclude with the election being conducted by the 91st day prior to the regular election.
Correct.
You start there and back up.
What would that be?
January 7?
Yeah.
January 7?
Yes.
Wow.
And what is, actually, I do have one more question for you, Suzanne. What would be for that special election? Typically, they're about 90 days, and for your peace of mind, would that be about the minimum you'd be looking for to organize and conduct one?
Sure. Yeah, 90 days would be sufficient for me to pull it together and do it.
And what's the project, another issue that'll come up, Suzanne, is the projected cost of that. Are we still looking at that 15, 20,000 sort of dollar cost to do that?
Yes, this one would be a little higher, because as council will recall, the last special election, we coordinated with Teller County. This one, this one, we would be on our own. So instead of the 15,000, it could be a little bit closer to 20,000 when we do them by ourselves.
And to emphasize what I said earlier, whereas the statutes require you to have a special election, if you are, if you do not fill the vacancy within 60 days after it occurs, your charter does not require you to have an election if you're unable to fill the vacancy, but you must attempt to fill the vacancy if you want to call a special election for this.
Yeah, yeah.
Jeff, I have a question for you. In the deliberations of, number one, attempting an appointment, is all that done in open meetings like this? Is that done in executive session? What's the protocol for that to all unfold?
These things, the rule on executive sessions, I'm sure you know, is that the statutes provide particular bases where it's said that the public interest is served better by discussion happening in private. That can happen for personnel matters, but this really isn't a personnel matter. City personnel, these are members of the governing body, so. Most of the attorneys I know don't believe that you discuss filling vacancies in a closed session. This is something done in a public meeting. Indeed, the legislature prohibited use of secret voting in the filling of these vacancies a few years ago, which emphasizes the policy that all this should be done in public.
So one last question on that, then. Is this something that we do from a, a normal council meeting, or do we call a, a work session, a special meeting? Is there any?
There's no, there's no hard and fast rule. You guys get to decide how you want to proceed. If you wanted to have a work session to discuss the pluses and minuses of various applicants, you could certainly do it that way.
That's all thinking.
A secret session is legally appropriate or just possible here.
Mayor Pro Tem?
Yes.
I would like to make a motion that we appoint the Mayor Pro Tem Labar to serve the rest of this term.
I'll second that.
Neil?
Yes.
Path?
No.
Zuluwaga?
No.
Alfieri?
No.
Case?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Labar, are you going to vote on this, or?
No.
Okay. So this motion fails two to three.
Now, with that, you've satisfied, you're proceeding to directing staff to call a special election to fill this vacancy, if you want, or, as I mentioned earlier, you have the no-action option, which leaves Mayor Pro Tem Labar in her present position as mayor, acting mayor.
Well, forgive me. I mean, I would like to see our option also be opening up the position for appointment to the general citizenry. This was a little preemptive.
Pardon me?
Yeah, I mean, I, I would make a motion that we move to a future, move to a future council, that we take applications for the position of mayor and move that those, we have a, you know, a 30-day time period to be able to take in those applications and then consider them in a future council meeting.
And that's your motion, sir, correct?
That's my motion.
I'll second that.
And, and just to clarify, Jeff, that is appropriate, correct? That, that step is an appropriate step to make towards, prior to going to a special election.
Absolutely. I was, I was running through the options, and I just didn't get through them all.
Thank you.
And we'll call the vote. Path?
Yes.
Zuluwaga?
Yes.
Alfieri?
Yes.
Case?
Yes.
Labar?
Yes.
Neil?
No.
Thank you. Motion carries 5-1, and I just want to make sure I have my direction from council correctly, that I will put out an ad for this opening, this vacant for the mayor, mayoral position, and I will advertise it for 30 days, and then we will schedule a council meeting to do the interviews and hear it, correct?
Yeah, yes. And the intention of my motion is to do that at the next council meeting after the close of the 30-day period.
Okay, next meeting after 30 days. Got it. Thank you.
Okay. The next item is additions, deletions, or corrections on the agenda. And there are none. And now we are moving on to number five, consent calendar.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Labar. This evening, we have two sets of minutes on the consent calendar. We have one set of minutes from the February 4, 2021 meeting, and another set of minutes from the February 18, 2021 regular city council meeting. And then, I don't know if council wants to take this separately, if they want to just do that and then discuss the next section of the consent contract. I need direction from council, how they'd like me to do this.
I just have one question, Suzanne.
Sir?
I just want to make sure that Robert is comfortable with the modification. He was the one that wanted the February 4, I believe it was, agenda adjusted. If, if we could get councilmembers, Zuluwaga, to say that he's comfortable with the new modification, that would help me with how I would vote.
Thanks, Rusty. Yes, it has modified, and you'll see it in a different color in the actual minutes. So yes, thanks.
Okay, well, then I will read the other item on the consent agenda, is the approval of the agreement between the City of Woodland Park, the Colorado Home Rule Municipality, and Wilson Williams LLP, under which the law firm shall perform legal services for this city.
So I do have one thing on the meeting minutes from the 18.
Yes.
Regarding our motion for appointments to Planning Commission, it said that it came to a tie, and that per the policy, the item would be tabled until the next council meeting on February 18, but that was the meeting of February 18, so March 4.
Okay, I will correct that. Thank you.
And do you want to explain the contract just for the public's benefit?
I think Mr. Wilson probably would do that.
That would be great. So we, before we vote on it, that'd be great.
Um, mayor, or members of council, this is essentially the, an agreement identical to the one with our prior firm, with just the name changed. All the terms of the agreement are identical to that prior agreement. It's a general form agreement for legal services to the city. We provide all general services. Asked of us by the council and staff, represent you in all bodies where that's required, provide defenses to get complaints and so forth. Our hourly rate is spec, was $215 an hour for Nina or I, under the old agreement. It's the same thing under this one. I'm trying to think if there were no real substantial changes. It's sort of a boilerplate agreement, frankly, for our, our general services as attorneys for the period.
I do have one more question on that. Is there a need for us to cancel our contract with your previous firm?
Nina, I think that, I think that happens by operation of law, by signing the new one, that it eclipses the old agreement.
Correct, and there was no notice provision in our current contract as well. You guys can get rid of us at days' notice. Our attorney rules of professional conduct say that, you know, the client, it's up to the client who they represent. So there are notice, I know this is being voted on today, so something for that would need to be done.
It's a good question, though. That was, but it happened, you, you sign one, the other one goes away.
So then, I make a motion to approve the consent calendar as it is stated.
I'll second.
Zuluwaga?
Yes.
Alfieri?
Yes.
Case?
Yes.
Labar?
Yes.
Neil?
Yes.
Path?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
Thanks, you guys. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Two lawyers for the price of one.
It's great to have you on board, Jeff.
Thank you.
All right. Mayor Pro Tem Labar, I can assist you with this. The public comments not on the agenda. We have two individuals signed up that we received emails from prior to the meeting, as per policy or procedure, and the first person is Bob Volpe. I am not sure if he's on right now.
And he also signed up for an item on the agenda as well, right?
Okay, yeah.
Okay.
So then the next person is Scott Davis. He has signed up for an item not on the agenda. I don't know if he's on with us.
Let's see. I see him.
Raise your hand.
I got him. Bring him in. And Mr. Davis, you are in the meeting with us. If you'd like to speak.
Hi, how are you guys?
Good, thank you. Did you get muted? Scott, I think you're muted.
You.
There you are. Now we hear you.
I appreciate all you guys do, especially, you know, with a foot of snow outside. My concerns are board members of voluntary boards for the city and also the DDA. We've recently had a member of two boards commit voter fraud. I, I know you guys can't answer the question, but it seems really, really, really inappropriate that this person is still on boards and representing the citizens of Woodland Park.
Any questions for Mr. Davis? See, none. And Mr. Davis, just so you know, I have looked into the rules of that, along with the city attorney. At this time, we don't have an answer for you or the member. We have to go by the board's rules for removal and contact, and so we will be looking through those. We are aware of the situation, and obviously, the public would be aware of any decisions we would make or discussion we would have regarding it, should a member be removed. But at this time, we don't necessarily have an answer for you, but thank you.
I kind of figured that. I just wanted to express my views and others in town that we've, we've got a problem, and it's not just Jan. So thank you all very much. I appreciate all you guys do, and thank you very much.
Well, Scott, just before you leave with that last comment, we have a problem, and it's not just the person that you stated. What's the other problem that you want to bring to our attention?
Well, there's a problem with the perception of how the city is being run, and that includes the boards. It seems like members of, some members of city council are being very, aren't working with the, the employees and the department heads of the city. And it's, it's just, this is a problem. We're going to lose some really good people, and we need to really come together and come to some kind of consensus. And I'm, and I'm very disappointed. We have people who want to move out of this town because of the way it's being run by council. So that's my point.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Point taken.
Thank you.
Thanks, Scott.
All right, Suzanne, who did we have next on the list? Is Mr. Volpe available?
But he, as you mentioned, he's on for an agenda item. My apologies, ma'am.
That's fine. And was there anyone else? I do not see any hands raised. All right. We will move on to item number seven, unfinished business. There is none. I don't believe that there is any public comment. And number eight on the agenda is ordinances on initial postings. We are looking at 8A.
This is for Sally.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. And council members, this is ordinance number 1392. On first reading, this is to extend or to create, establish a 12-month moratorium on applying to definition. on applying to definitions that deal with recreational park trailers and recreational vehicles. So you will recall that there was an emergency ordinance that established a ninety day moratorium. So that expires today and we are moving forward with a twelve month moratorium. If the council is able to establish new definitions or a direction prior to that twelve months, then this moratorium can be voided with a resolution. I recommend approval and setting the public hearing for March eighteenth. Thank you.
Jeff, I have a question for you. How is it that an ordinance gets moved with a resolution and not an ordinance? How is it a resolution is sufficient? Oh, sorry. Well, this is considered resolution eight seventy.
We're on eight A, sir.
Very good.
Why don't you?
Hold that question. Hold that question. It's coming.
That's the next item.
So we'll hold that one. Any questions on this on the moratorium or the setting of the hearing? That's.
I see council member Neil has a question.
What I'd like to know is if we vote on this extension, will we also have the opportunity Sally to take a look at the definition of recreational park trailers and recreational vehicles because those are not the terms used by the ANSI standard any longer.
Yes, that will be part of this entire process.
Okay, thank you.
I want to, yeah, I want to I want to add in here. I received an email from the city attorney suggesting that I might consider recusing myself after speaking with legal counsel and taking my own judgment. I am not recusing myself from this, even though I do live in a in a park where I have a permanent contract to live there. The reason I am not recusing myself is because of the fact that the this is quite similar to any ordinance or requirement that might be, for example, placed upon an apartment complex where changes in taxes or rules for how the apartment complex is managed and it would be a general thing applicable to everyone in that and any other apartment complex, which is the same situation in this circumstance where any person who takes up residence in any of these parks, which allow long term RVs to to exist, that it would apply to all of them equally. So I am of a very conscious nature, not recusing myself from this vote or any future vote on this on matters related to this item.
I do see our city attorney Nina Williams has her hand raised.
Sorry, just to become a panelist again, I apologize.
You're in.
If I could comment, Mayor Protem. I did send a letter to council member Path as he describes. The charter provides that he is to let us know whether he's going to recuse himself in the situation of that sort of recommendation. He has let us know that he's not. The council, the charter further provides in that case that the remaining members of council shall have a vote on whether or not council member Path has a conflict. You could do that now, or you could do that at a future meeting. There's no timing specified for that. But it does say that this shall happen rather than may happen. So and I've discussed this with council member Path before. We had a good conversation about all of this. But that's the and I will recast the letter that I sent to council member Path that describes all of this and your obligations and send it to all of you now that he has notified us of his decision.
All right. I think that because this is to consider going to a public hearing now is not necessarily the time.
Right, okay.
Any further questions?
I'm just going to make a further statement also that I think it is incumbent upon us as a council to consider this matter as it relates to businesses in our community that are thriving and providing a benefit to the community. And we need to recognize that the import of this particular decision, which I think was by many people agreed upon in last year's resolution as something grandfathered in with that we need to be very, very cautious and careful about business owners in our community who are providing a benefit, not only to people who maintain permanent residence here, but also to those who are coming and adding benefit to our community by obtaining these sorts of arrangements, which frankly, in some particular cases, but not in all, allow for people who are attending Caris to not take up other resident spaces. And for multi-year purposes of attending the university, it's a great outlet for that. But most importantly, the people in our community who own these businesses are providing a very positive benefit to everything that is happening. And that is my concern. I I can live in an apartment. I can purchase a home. My wife and I started a business in this community and we made the determination to do it in this manner so that we would have extra personal finances to take care of that business, which after the COVID thing became quite necessary. So, you know, that's, that's why it's not a personal matter for me. I can do whatever and will do whatever to maintain my residence in the community. But this is a greater potential harm and or benefit in maintaining these arrangements with the business owners who are here who are providing a excellent service to this community and have been long term members of this community who care about it and treat it very well. And in the particular instances of the those residence areas that are in the community do so in a way that does not cause any harm to a community at all. So I wanted to make that statement as well.
Okay, can I get a motion to consider the ordinance thirteen ninety-two?
I'll move to approve thirteen ninety-two as presented.
I'll second.
Thank you. Alfieri?
Yes.
Case?
Yes.
Labar?
Yes.
Neil?
Yes.
Path?
Yes.
Zuluaga?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
All right. I'm going to go ahead and move on to public hearings. We do have a quasi judicial amendment. With this, I'm going to read the quasi judicial. And I do have to recuse myself from this issue. So before that happens, I'm going to ask the city attorney in his opinion, if it is all right, if I still reside over the meeting and if council is comfortable with that, I will not participate in the subject. Just.
Members of the council. Since the mayor Protem has a conflict, her duty under the statute is to inform all of you of that conflict, which she just did. To refrain from voting, which she's explained is her intention. And the third element is to not attempt to influence all any of the rest of you on how you vote. Now, some of our other jurisdictions, we have non-voting mayors. And when the non-voting mayor has a conflict, the non-voting mayor is still able to preside over the meeting. But the real question for all of you is do if you if you feel that the mayor Protem presiding over this issue, though she isn't going to vote and has declared a conflict, would it anyway tend to influence you on how you're going to vote? Then you should mention that right now and we'll pick you guys can pick somebody else to preside over this issue.
I'm comfortable with her participating on mute so that she is simply in attendance and we can quickly move to the next item when we finish the votes.
I'm fine with her presiding over the meeting. I do not feel any influence from her at all. Thank you.
I'm fine with her presiding.
Any? I have no concerns.
Me as well.
Oh, I think that was everybody.
That was. And then I do have a question since it does pertain to recusals. Legal opinion and then it's to disclose to the other council members if they would like me to recuse myself, I would be happy to do that. I own four trailers, two of them are RVs. And in fact, I have been looking and hoping for an enclosed RV storage facility, which this conditionally used site plan actually has one. So if there is a fear that I have a desire to see a an enclosed storage facility for RVs go up in Woodland Park. If you just let me know, you want me to recuse myself, I I will. Otherwise, I feel I can be impartial in the vote, but I do want to disclose that I would become a customer potential.
My personal reaction is if you don't feel that the situation you described Rusty is going to result in interference with your impartiality years that I believe you would still be able to participate in this. But Nina, I'm going to defer to you since you're the quasi judicial queen. The expert on this. Do you agree with me on that?
I think in a situation, it's appropriate that it was disclosed, but it sounds like, you know, such a tenuous link that if he councillor Neil feels that it's still going to be unbiased and not prejudged by that, then it sounds like it's it won't tarnish the hearing for him to vote immediately.
Bias and prejudgment are two critical terms here. And that's that's sweet. Now, if you feel like you could avoid those two things, council member Neil, that's then you could still participate.
Well, the one thing I do, I had read through the packet and I had formulated what I think I would be voting. I still want to hear the discussion from the other council members. It was when I started going through all this site plan, just to see what it was going to look like that I discovered after I had already kind of formulated which direction I was leaning. I discovered that there were in fact enclosed RV storage containers. So I want to disclose that to the other council members. And if, like I said, if you you want me to recuse myself, fine. If if you're comfortable, I will cast a vote. I think I know what I would do pending further discussion from the council members.
It's up to you to determine if whichever way it goes is going that you're going to be biased in terms of how it affects what you're doing.
Agreed. I leave it entirely up to you, council member Neil.
Thank you to both of you. Jim, Robert?
You decide.
Thank you. Kelly?
I have no issue. Thank you, Rusty.
Then I'll go ahead and stay for the discussion. Thank you.
Okay, quickly, I just get to read our quasi judicial rule. Council members use like use council members use electronic device to access the materials relevant to the public hearings before us. Be assured that it is common practice of the city council that these devices are not being used for texting, emailing, or other communications during public hearings. And now we can move on to nine A, consider resolution eight seventy-two with the two-year extension conditional use. And I believe that Laura is taking this. Thank you, Mayor Protem Labar. So this is agenda item nine A. It's consideration of a request by M three XP two LLC, the applicant who is in the audience tonight. His name is Michael Harper. He's one of the partners of this LLC and he will be speaking. And nineteen three fifty group LLC, who is the property owner on this site. It's a request for a two-year extension of a conditional use permit number eighteen oh one, which had a concurrent site plan review, case number eighteen oh one and ordinance thirteen thirty, series twenty eighteen. All for a seventy-two thousand four hundred square foot storage facility proposed on four point seven five acres described as lot one WP Saddle Club filing number one with an address of nineteen three fifty East US Highway twenty-four located in the Service Commercial SC Zone District. And this has gone through Planning Commission and is here before you for the public hearing for this extension in front of city council. So on January twenty ninth, the city planning department did receive an application for this extension. That was January twenty ninth of two thousand and twenty-one. And it was an extension to to for a two-year extension of this conditional use permit and site plan review for this particular proposal. So this was originally approved by city council on July nineteenth, two thousand and eighteen. And at that time, Kelly Case was on city council and she is the only member now from two thousand and eighteen that is still on council and that will be voting tonight. So what I'd like to do for the benefit of the new counselors is present the PowerPoint presentation of the development as it was presented to council in two thousand and eighteen. I'd like to do this briefly in less than five minutes, hopefully, just to give you an understanding of what the project was. But again, you are here tonight to simply vote on an extension because the original ordinance for the conditional use and site plan was is only valid for two years. We can only issue a zoning development permit based on that approval within two years. And so just so council is aware, that two-year period expired on July nineteenth, two thousand and twenty. Now, the applicant had submitted zoning development permits for the surface site work for grading drainage, erosion control, all of that stuff. Those applications were submitted in February of two thousand and nineteen. And since that time, well, that was for the site work, they submitted the application to bore under the highway US twenty-four with the water line. They just submitted that in January of this year. So we we needed both of those applications. But with the site work that was submitted in early two thousand and nineteen, there have been a lot of back and forth and compliance review and changes and engineering changes and site work changes to those zoning development permits that were submitted. And that's one of the reasons it has been so long in in the approval of the zoning permits. So with council's permission, I would like to spend five minutes and go through the development, if that's all right. I promise I'll talk fast, so I'm going to share my screen. So this is the hang on here. Okay, that's much better. So this is the original presentation that was presented to the city council that was seated in two thousand and eighteen. So this is the Woodland Park self-storage facility. It's conditionally used permit eighteen oh one SPR, which is site plan review eighteen oh one. This was to allow for the following uses on this property. It was for mini storage warehouse for personal property, so self-storage for a seventy-two thousand four hundred square foot storage facility on approximately five point two five acres. And at that time, it was on government lots two to four. At that time, in two thousand and eighteen, it was unplatted. But the property owner and the developers have since that time platted it into the Woodland Park Saddle Club filing that we read earlier. And the address again is nineteen two fifty and it's in the Service Commercial Zone. So the address may change. But the Service Commercial Zone District has not changed since two thousand and eighteen. So this was approved by council and reviewed by council on July nineteenth. But the service commercial zone district has not changed since twenty eighteen. So this was approved by council and reviewed by council on July nineteenth, twenty eighteen. The planning commission reviewed it and made a recommendation in May of twenty eighteen. So the site is here just north of the Walmart. You can see here's highway twenty-four going north, south, Trawl Road on the east side of highway twenty-four. And the connection to this site is an extension of Trawl Road. The access is exactly opposite that. So this is an aerial photo showing the site in question.
I'm sorry, Laura, can we interrupt? We're not seeing the screen that you're talking about. I apologize.
Your slides are not advancing for us.
Oh. Well, that's odd. So you're just seeing the Woodland Park self-storage title slide?
Yeah, maybe if you just go back and click on each slide in the software instead of having the presentation.
Okay.
There you go.
Okay. So are you seeing the location slide?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, great. So the location showed, the star shows the location and with respect to highway twenty-four and highway sixty-seven in the city of Woodland Park. It's in the south, southernmost part of the city of Woodland Park. This is the site itself. It's the aerial photo that shows in red the site, the yellow hatch plant. Did that not go forward?
No.
The aerial photo has not advanced.
Advancing on my screen. That is so odd.
You can see the preview that it is the next slide, but it has not advanced so that it is the primary slide.
It's been one of those nights.
Yeah. Is that the next slide? Is that the aerial photo?
The next slide will become the aerial photo. That is correct.
Okay, so what you're seeing right now is, is the location slide, right?
Primarily, yes.
Sure. Yeah, you can run it and I'll tell you when to advance. Okay. I don't have a disc. Actually, it's on this, it's on the screen over there on the computer. Excuse me while I figure this out.
Thank you.
Is it in the packet? Can we just pull up the packet?
It is in the pa, no, the PowerPoint is not in the packet.
Is it on, what's it named?
It's Woodland Park Storage. Hang on, I'll come. For a joke. Oh, dear God. Michael, don't do that to me.
I bet you Jeff has a joke. Right, Jeff?
I mean, it's showing both. So.
Anybody here from Arkansas?
Oh, my God, getting our contract approved.
You know how, you know how come the toothbrush was invented in Arkansas? Because if it was invented anywhere else, it'd be the teeth brush. Sorry, I could really, that's how I'd lose a job as a city attorney is jokes like that, you know?
Yeah, you, you might get in trouble over that one.
That's it for me.
Sounds like a Neanderthal joke.
It's still here. I'm just standing up for a minute.
I can do it, Rob.
While Laura is trying to get the presentation, Sally, are you available where I could ask a couple of questions?
Yes.
If this site plan were to come in today versus twenty eighteen, in other words, brand new came in today and you were looking at it and comparing it to the municipal code as of today.
Yes.
I, I have been told that this plan would meet everything in the municipal code today.
That's correct. There have been no changes in the municipal code that would affect this site plan, whether it was submitted two years ago or today.
Okay, the second question is, I, I had a citizen ask a lot of good questions. If the census changed the head count in Woodland Park that would force some different standards of development, this, this thing, this proposal, if it were approved by today's standards tonight, it would be essentially grandfathered and Jeff, I'm using your loose definition of the word grandfather that you gave some definitions to. It would be grandfathered and would not have to meet any future unknown census-related standards, correct?
Rusty, was that directed to the attorneys?
No, that was directed to Sally.
Okay.
Oh, I thought you were asking the attorney. That's correct. And there are very few changes in our rules and regulations that are driven by census. However, there is one on the horizon, which has to do with, once we hit ten thousand people in Woodland Park, we must become an MS four community, which has to do with drainage. And that is primarily the way in which the drainage facilities are managed, inspected and monitored, but would not affect our development code.
So this, this site plan would not be made to change anything from today?
No, not with the population.
That's what I thought. Thank you.
Thank you.
So Mayor Pro Tim LaBarre and councilmembers, can you see the aerial photo now?
Yes.
Okay, so I think I'd like to continue and I'll just have Rob advance the slides for me. I'm actually go back to the aerial photo, Rob. Thank you. So again, this shows the site. It shows its proximity to Fountain Creek here on the west. Highway twenty-four on the east. It shows the Teller County boundary in the yellow line. And the access to this site is here is Trawl Road. My cursor shows Trawl Road on the east side of highway twenty-four. And here is the extension of that Trawl Road. This would be a private road when it gets developed, especially as access for this site. So this just gives you an idea of where we are and where the site is. It remains there. And next slide, Rob. This is the zoning. It's the SC service commercial zone district. The site is shown here in red. Nothing has changed in terms of zoning. Next slide, Rob. This is the site as it was taken. This photo was taken in twenty eighteen. Not much has changed. If you go out there in twenty twenty-one, next slide, Robert. So this is taken from the Swiss chalet looking over the site that is proposed to be developed for the storage facility. Next slide. This is a slide that simply shows some of the nearest residences and structures surrounding the proposed site. The nearest structure is the lift station on, on city property. This is owned by the city of Woodland Park. It's approximately eighty-five feet from the boundary of the proposed site. These Teller County residences are four hundred to five hundred feet away. The nearest residence is this mobile home in the Mobile Home Park. It's approximately a hundred and sixty-seven feet away from the nearest structure that is proposed within this site. Next slide. So this is a site plan showing the proposed layout. It's very hard to see, at least on my screen it is. But what it does show you is Trawl Road coming in off the highway into a parking lot where they're proposing to have some U-Haul trailers and truck rentals here approximately seven along this edge of the parking lot, seven trailers, seven trucks, excuse me. The climate controlled building for storage is this unit right here. The RV parking that is proposed is along here. This is Fountain Creek to the east or to the west, sorry. And then there are onsite or at-grade storage, not climate-controlled facilities proposed in these two areas here. Next slide, Rob. So this is a, just a block massing showing the footprints of the actual buildings that are proposed. The climate control building here, the RV storage, which will have, I believe, electricity, but that is to be determined still. And then these other self-storage units here that are single-story. Next slide, Rob. This is just an idea of what some of the lighting along this self-storage facility will look like. The green is this shielded type light lamp. And the blue and yellow is this type of a lamp. I know they're hard to see, but it'll give you an indication of the lighting that's proposed within this facility. Next slide, Rob. This is a landscaping that the applicant has proposed. You can see some pine trees and the pole sign that they're proposing, as well as the entire perimeter will be fenced. So it'll be a secure facility. Next slide, Rob. This was submitted with the site plan showing a typical facade exterior. This is the climate control building and this is what some of the colors that they're proposing and that they will be tied to for this climate control facility. Next slide, Rob. And these are the surface units that are single-story, no climate control in these units. Next slide. So with the original twenty eighteen conditional use permit and site plan review, we did a referral. It went to our typical utilities department, public works department, police and the building departments. We also sent it out to the Northeast Teller County Fire Protection District, IRA Black Hills, and other utility providers. There were public notices for the twenty eighteen analysis as there were also public notices for the extension we hear tonight. There are posters that we post, one poster that we post onsite. There's publication in the courier and we sent out adjacent property notices for tonight's hearing to everyone within one hundred and fifty feet. Again, the service commercial is the zone district. And next slide, Robert. So this is the service commercial zone and the truck trailer rental is a permitted use in that SC zone district. Conditional uses, which is why they had to go through a conditional use permit, is the mini storage warehouse. These are the service commercial limitations. None of these have changed. The conditional use has not changed and the truck trailer rental use has not changed. Next slide. So these are the conditional use standards, conditional use permit standards. There are eleven of them. These are still in place today and hasn't changed. None of the specific standards have changed. We look at the need for the particular use as proposed, the public health and welfare of the proposed use and how it impacts the public health and welfare of the city and the community. Property value impacts, whether it harmonizes, whether it conforms or comports with the city plans and city regulations. What are the traffic impacts? What kind of drainage are they proposing and how will it be mitigated? What are the water sewer and wastewater needs? What type of hazards, if any, are emanating from the proposed use and the architectural design? All of this was reviewed in great detail with the twenty eighteen conditional use permit review. Next slide, Rob. With the site plan review, we look at many similar items. We look at the city plans and conformance with the twenty-ten comprehensive plan. We looked at city regulations in terms of grading erosion design, parking trees, architectural layout. We look at the traffic impacts. We look at the topography of the site, the soils, the drainage, environmental hazards, water, wastewater, sewer needs, air quality, fire, safety hazards, and compatibility with the surrounding community. None of these standards have changed and are still applicable in twenty nineteen, in twenty twenty-one. And the applicant is working through all of these design issues with his zoning development permit that he is submitting. Next slide, Rob. So at that time, staff did recommend approval of the conditional use and site plan review. It was approved in twenty eighteen. It was approved for two years, so it expired in twenty twenty. And the applicant had submitted zoning development permits. That staff was in the process of reviewing and re-reviewing and they were doing resubmittals and revisions and we finally got the bore application of the highway January of this year. And then the applicant is now requesting for a two-year extension of the conditional use permit and the site plan review. Next slide, Rob. This is the ordinance that was approved in twenty eighteen. It was attached to the staff report for your consideration. Next slide, Rob. These are all of the conditions in this ordinance would still apply. We are not making a change to this ordinance in any way, shape, or form. And that's why we don't need another ordinance. We're not changing the ordinance. We're just extending the approval of this ordinance. And that is just an extension pursuant to the municipal code, which can be addressed via a resolution. We don't need to have an ordinance to, to qualify that. And we're not changing this ordinance in any way, shape, or form. Next slide. So all of these conditions would still stand and still apply. Some of the conditions, like the subdivision of this lot, have already been fulfilled and satisfied. Next slide, Rob. And we are in the process of dealing with all of the construction drawings and reviewing them to ensure that they comply with our application, or with our municipal code, I'm sorry. We have not received any building permit applications yet, so they have not got to that point. Next slide, Rob. This was just the signing of the ordinance in July of twenty eighteen. Next slide, Rob. So that concludes my presentation. That was the twenty eighteen proposal. And this was just some examples of storage units that I presented to council at that time. So this is an application simply to enact the municipal code provision that allows for an extension of the municipal code of an approved conditional use and site plan review. Planning commission did review this application for extension at their public hearing on February twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-one, and did recommend that city council go ahead and extend the approvals for the conditional use and site plan review. And that concludes my report. Mayor Pro Tim, the applicant, as I said, Michael Harper is in the audience and is available to answer any questions and to speak if you would like. And I'm available to answer any questions too. Mr. Harper, if you want to raise your hand, if you have anything you'd like to say, or if council has any questions for you, we can bring you into the meeting. Mayor Pro Tim, he's in the audience. Oh, good. Okay. I can't see the audience view, so.
You could write from your.
Certainly willing to entertain any questions that you have.
I can hear him, so. Okay, Kelly, do you have any questions for Mr. Harper? Go ahead.
I, I just.
I don't, thank you.
I, I just have one, Mr. Harper, in terms of, we saw from the drilling, the boring under the, under the highway last month or six weeks ago or so, or whatever that time was. And I just have a question of why, what's the ti, what's the time lag? Why is there seem to be, this looks like this has been well thought through. Doesn't look like there's, this is loose in any way, but why has it taken you so long to come back to council for an extension? Given that, I mean, this is pretty carefully dialed in.
I understand the question. There, last summer, when our.
I'm going to interrupt really quick and ask Michael.
I'm going to interrupt really quick and ask Michael to just lean into the microphone.
Oh, yeah.
Turn on the microphone. Is it not on?
So we were moving right along with the plan to proceed and break ground. And about a year ago, we all know what happened. And our financing that we had at that time slowed down. The individual that we were working with at the bank, the lender that we were working through, left his position at that bank. So we virtually had to start all over again with a new lender. In progressing with any of the groundbreak, which would include the water line, we didn't want to proceed with anything without having all the financing ducks in a row. So once you have the wheels in motion with this kind of development, it's kind of like turning a ship. It takes a while to slow it down and then it takes a while to crank it back up to head in the new direction. We're not changing direction, but now we have to start our momentum all over again. So that's the, really, the summary of why we're in this position right now. Last summer, we could have just simply provided the application for the extension of the conditional use permit. But there were additional clarifications and engineering data that had to be incorporated along with our application. So we chose to submit everything at once, once the additional engineering had been completed. And that was submitted with the application in January.
So if we grant this extension, I thought I saw in the, the package that you're about five or seven months in terms of construction. Is that, is that true? And do you expect to break ground on that after the drilling is bored for the, for the highway?
Yes, it'll be somewhat simultaneous. The one is not dependent on the other in terms of timing, but relatively so. They'll take place at about the same time.
Very good, thank you.
Mayor Protem, if I may just make a statement. Colleen Monahan, who is from Matrix Design, is an attendee and she may have some specific responses to some of the construction questions if you wanted to bring her in as a panelist.
Sure. There she is. I will bring her in.
While you do that, Mayor Protem Labarre have a few questions as well. I do have to say, I also share council members, Zuluaga, and some of the members on planning commission had mentioned their concern over the fact that the, the permit had expired more than six months ago. My concern is not setting a precedent of that being expected or accepted that these permits are expired and then we come back for an extension quite a bit of time after they've expired. Ultimately, that doesn't override personal property rights for me by any means. My other question, though, is in regards to when this first came about, I remember there was a lot of talk about the creek bed and the, the structural integrity, if you will, of the creek bed. So that was talked about two years ago. I believe we had one of those relatively major floods that went through Fountain Creek since that time. Has that been reviewed again? Do we know what, if there have been any major changes to the creek bed or any concerns about building on it now that maybe didn't exist back then?
Colleen, is there anything in that question that you'd like to address?
Hi, thank you. Yes, I am the engineer on the project and everything that we are doing on the project is well outside of the 100-year floodplain. So if there's anything that needs to be done, I think it's, it'll all be stable in that situation.
So has that been looked at recently or is that just based on the information you had from when this was originally applied for in 2018?
Yeah, we have the current floodplain maps and so, yeah, everything is currently being looked at as well.
Okay, thank you. I think that's all my questions.
I'm just going to briefly interrupt and remind council that this, this is merely a hearing for the two-year extension of the conditional use permit. We are not rearguing whether the permit is going to be taken away based on previous decisions. So we wanted to stick with the fact that are you going to allow for the permit to be extended or not? That's the topic of this, of this meeting. So on that note, are there any further questions? I am seeing none. So I'm going to go ahead and ask for a motion to consider the resolution number 872.
Did we go to public comment?
Public comment.
I'm sorry. Do I, Suzanne, did you have anyone? I don't see any hands raised.
No ma'am, no, no one signed up for public comments.
Okay. I always do that on this topic. All right, I'm going to go ahead and ask for a motion now, thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to consider resolution number eight. I'd like to make a motion to approve resolution number 872, series 2021, for a two-year extension of conditional use permit 18-01, ordinance 1330 of 2018, and site plan review 18-01 to July 19, 2022 for proposed 72,400 square foot storage facility on 4.74 acres on Lot 1. Woodland Park Saddle Club filing number 1, 19350 East US Highway 24 in the service commercial zone as requested by M3XP2 LLC and 1935 Group LLC.
I'll second.
Thank you. Case?
Yes.
Neil?
Yes.
Sorry, I didn't know I was muted yet.
Zuluaga?
Yes.
Alfieri?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries five, five zero, excuse me. Council, Mayor Protem Labarre abstaining, thank you.
All right, we're moving on to number 10, new business. And I do know that we had Mr. Volpe signed up. And I see his name on the list there. And I'm going to go ahead and bring him in. And Mr. Volpe.
Protem Labarre, before you do, may I recap the changes that have happened since this came before council previously?
Sure.
So at our meeting on February 4th, we had the initial draft of this resolution. Council members expressed a desire to change some of the language to that. Mayor Protem Labarre and council member Neil had taken the time to make changes for them, to make them comfortable with the resolution. I would like to say I really appreciate their contributions to it. I found them very worthwhile, taking this in a direction that was more addressed at the state legislature and their failure to act in their duty to necessarily provide checks and balances when it comes to the governor's executive authorities. I found that to be a very, very beneficial and valuable addition to this. So we had that, that draft created and that is the one that's before us now.
Thank you.
And.
Go ahead, council member Neil.
And to give credit where credit is due, Ms. Alfieri did get the, the very first draft of the modified 871 in which she did come back with a recommendation that was more than acceptable, in my opinion, based on what I've heard from the citizens, both, both sides of the aisle. And that was included in this version. So thank you, Ms. Alfieri, for working with that draft.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to go ahead and let Mr. Volpe speak if you would like to.
Okay, can you hear me?
Absolutely.
Okay, I'm still opposed to this resolution, even with the modifications that have been made to it. According to a report in the Denver Post dated February 3rd, Colorado is fourth safest state in the country dealing with COVID. Teller County has just been designated Level Blue on the COVID scale. This resolution mocks all the progress the State Health Department and the governor have made. This resolution is nothing more than a snipe at the government, governor, when you should be thanking him for all the great work that he's done. We just lost our mayor to COVID. Some of you still don't seem to take this COVID thing seriously. Now, there are 17 new strains of the virus in the U.S. that threaten us with contagion, contagion rates up to 70% more virulent than the original virus. New projections from the Public Health Research suggest that the England, England COVID-19 variant could become the dominant strain in Colorado in the coming weeks, which would drive a spring surge and lead to hundreds of thousands more cases. It is unknown at this time if the new variants may be vaccine resistant. According to the Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment, there are 822 documented cases of people who have been infected twice by this virus. In conclusion, this, this resolution is ill-timed, smacks of partisan vindictiveness, is irresponsible and is counterproductive when the vaccine rollout is on the verge of defeating this virus. The reference to Polis being a tyrant is more partisan hyperpobably. The governor is not acting solely, as is the definition of a tyrant. Polis is acting on the recommendations from the State Health Department. Under the U.S. Constitution 10th Amendment and the U.S. Supreme Court decisions over nearly 200 years, state governments have the primary authority to control the spread of dangerous diseases within their jurisdictions. The 10th Amendment, which gives states all the powers not specifically given to the federal government, allows them the authority to make public health emergency actions such as setting quarantines and business restrictions. If one person sees this resolution and does not wear a mask because of it and dies from COVID, you all who vote for this share in that person's death. If you want to create a resolution, build one that urges people to continue to wear masks, get vaccinated, don't let your guard down now that we have the end of this virus in sight. To quote John F. Kennedy, "In a time of domestic crisis, men of goodwill and generosity should be able to unite regardless of party or politics." Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Volpe. Council, any comments, questions?
Yeah, I'd like to make a comment. I'm on record stating very clearly that the governor, whom I know and personally respect, is also a strong political opponent in things that I have done through the years and certainly will remain so in many areas. I have stated publicly that I feel like that the governor has tried to do the best that he can under these circumstances, even though I disagree with some of the orders that are there. I also want to go on record by stating the fact that 10th Amendment issues are relevant and the statement that relates to that is certainly applicable, but it doesn't stop in the governor's office. It goes through the legislature and all the way down into local considerations as well, which we enjoy under our state constitution and as a home rural city have a say in this too. Again, under constitutional provisions in the state of Colorado. Whereas statements in it may poke in one form or another at the governor. I've made it very clear that the general tenor of this and the public policy that is encouraged through this is useful and helpful. Lastly, I have to take great offense at anyone stating that anyone who votes yes on this measure is responsible for any particular death. We have made it very clear in this measure and taking great pains in this measure and even in the measure that the City of Monument passed, which was, this was modeled after, to say that people should take their own decisions. The fundamental reason that I vote for this resolution is because it is not primarily the state's prerogative or the federal government's prerogative or any other government entity to tell people how they should make personal decisions. The role of government is to protect society by giving, by providing a means for the rule of law to take place. That also makes us responsible to consider constitutional provisions which give individual rights, particularly through the Bill of Rights, and that many of those considerations are what's at stake in how we do public policy. I would also add that when it comes to the governor's role in this state for how emergency provisions can be utilized, there is a very serious question, even though it has been adjudicated in courts otherwise, there, there is a very real concern about the breadth of emergency powers that resides presently in state law in the governor's office. And I think it is our responsibility as a home rural city and more generally as citizens to take note of that and to make statements thereby. We are not restricted from doing so and I think we are encouraged to do so in a free society. So I think, notwithstanding words like tyrant related to the governor, I think that we do need to assert this situation here. We need to take businesses into account, which is what we're doing. And we are strongly encouraging citizens to take appropriate precautions based upon their best judgment. An individual's attempts or ability to make their own judgments about what they want to do in response to this are not mitigated or restricted or taken away in any manner, shape or form. We encourage businesses to put whatever restrictions to protect themselves from exposure to COVID that they deem necessary. What we, so we're not restricting people taking positive action to protect themselves. What we are doing is stating that it is not the government's prerogative to decide for citizens or for businesses or for any other entity or individual in this state and certainly in this community from taking every precaution that they see necessary. This, this measure does not do anything of the sort and to the contrary encourages them to take appropriate steps. So that's why I'm a strong yes for this resolution.
Council member Neil.
I do want to go on record regarding a couple of things. When I met with Mayor Protem Labarre to take a look at how we might move forward, it was after several telephone calls to two of our commissioners, Eric Stone and Dan Williams, who provided guidance to me that I think they said some similar words to Ms. Labarre. And that helped us to redirect. And I coupled that with what council member Path did just restate for the record. He did come online strongly and say that he personally knows Governor Polis. And while council member Path and Polis would probably be mortal enemies on most legislative items, it was Mr. Path's testimony that he felt the governor was working as best he could to try and do what's right. He was trying not to be political. And therefore, Mayor Protem Labarre and I went to great lengths to take what originally came from Ms. Alfieri and, and structured. So we were not poking the governor in the eye after he had just made some major consensus, consensus.
Concessions.
Concessions on how the color ratings were done. I mean, he made some big changes from listening to our commissioners, and those calculations brought us from a high orange, almost red, to a low yellow, and we are already moved to blue. So, it was a chance not to poke the governor, but to actually thank him by redirecting where perhaps our city would like the citizens to see more focus, and that's on the legislature doing their job better. But it was not a time to poke the governor. It was a time to say, "Thank you for listening to us." And in fact, the commissioners stressed the fact that, for the first time in thirty years, they had made, had a commitment from our governor to come to Teller County to listen to the citizens. That's a big thing, and I did not want to see anything undermining the governor coming to Teller County and listening to us, so we might have a little bit louder voice in any policies he puts forward. So, Mr. Pfaff, thank you for that testimony. It was very important to me when I tried to work with Mayor Protem on some language that would be a semi-compromise between the far right and the far left on this. And to reiterate, the language about the mask was removed because we're strongly encouraging all citizens to public, all public health orders, to isolate the one on a mask-wearing or social. We're covering it all. We are strongly encouraging citizens to follow the public health orders. We want them to. But we are also, at the same time, trying to put some of that decision in the hands of the people while we are balancing our poor businesses that are suffering. So, Mr. Pfaff, you may not hear this too often, but thank you for your efforts. Thank you, Ms. Alfieri, for your efforts in taking that one sentence and working with me on that language. I too strongly endorse this, and hopefully it does send the right message to both sides of the city divide. Thank you.
Counsel Member Zuluaga.
I have some thoughts on this resolution, and they may surprise some of you. Let me start by saying that I'm encouraged that three of my colleagues got together and ironed out a proposed modification to Resolution 871. "In the wake of the loss of Mayor Carr to the China virus, my friend and an inspiration in his advocacy of the best interests of Woodland Park and her citizens, I've deliberated very long and hard about this resolution, not that it's import in the rule of law, but rather that it is sound in tone of liberty and personal responsibility quickly being forgotten in this pandemonium and the now-biased public discourses. For the past twelve months, I've watched tragic losses to small businesses in our city, domestic violence and marriage breakdown through the anxiety and stress brought about by onerous government bureaucrats, thinking that they know what is best for us all, the loss of civil liberties, the disruption of our children's education, the social disconnect between us, and the increase in suicides in our county, to name a few equally concerning public health and safety concerns. Yes, we all set on alert when it was first reported that we had a worldwide outbreak of the China Wuhan virus, a strain of the COVID virus, commonly known by the medical folks as the annual strain of the flu. Yes, it is a man-made modified strain, and it is serious. However, twelve months later, it is not what we thought it was. It is not on par with the Spanish Flu, the bubonic plague, or the like. But it sure has been a golden opportunity to attempt to take control of individuals' personal liberties and a personal responsibility of our lives. People die of this virus. Our mayor was sadly one of them. People die from the flu. We don't track the deaths of flu anymore. It's all COVID. How about heart attacks? Cancer, accidents, respiratory diseases like pneumonia, strokes, Alzheimer's, and diabetes. People die from these as well, and we do not shut down society. For me, it is time to take an inventory of what is real in this resolution that could speak to, albeit some of it being a symbolic speech. Many of you are concerned about your health, and if the government tells you to do something, you don't question it, you just do it. That's your choice. I was elected by you to protect the health, the safety, and the freedoms of Woodland Park residents, and that's from all enemies, foreign and domestic. I raised my right hand and placed the other on my Bible, and I swore to uphold the U.S. and the Colorado constitutions and the charters and the ordinances of the City of Woodland Park. I did not take an oath to uphold bad law and government overreach. To this point, the resolution is before us tonight because of an ongoing overreach by at least two branches of representative government. I agree to the positive addition where we challenge, whereas the governor has circumvented the representative balance of government, wherein emergency powers are limited and requires the legislator to convene to discuss and vote on any additional extension that would infringe on Coloradoan liberties. We, the elected officials in the City of Woodland Park, call on the state, on the Colorado State Legislature, legislature to vote on behalf of its citizens as to whether the governor's actions meet the limited requirements of protecting the health and safety of the public. That is a great addition. There have been many other changes, however, to the original resolution, and I object to these. I reject the removal of the language originally condemning first and foremost the unconstitutional limitations imposed upon the freedoms of our citizens by the governor. We have had, we have by constitutional design three branches of government that was intentionally designed by our forebears to protect the individual freedom and liberty from historic despots, form of governments that have plagued humanity since the beginning of time. Plagues have come and gone throughout civilization, and twelve months into this one, with all the data and statistics that we are able to bring to bear on rational minds, I, as an elected representative of eighty-two hundred residents, do not find that it justifies the many unintended consequences of top-down tyrannical government edicts done in the name of public health and safety. I reject the removal of the language that whereby all businesses, places of worship, and governmental meetings are essential to the exercise of individual fundamental rights, and it is discriminatory for the state to treat some, but not all establishments, with preference, by labeling them as essential. All businesses are essential. It is not the government's role, responsibility, or lawfully delegated authority to pick winners and losers in commerce and to threaten their livelihood if the business owners do not agree. Each has a right to feed his or her family. I reject the language change to attempt to water down the position I have as your advocate to uphold your unalienable rights and to say that, as counsel, I call upon the governor to take all necessary steps to prevent harm to its citizens and local businesses. Governor Polis has had twelve months to evaluate the consequence, the consequences of his executive orders, and has not considered the many other social damages his executive orders have caused. In this resolution, I want to stand up for your right as a citizen of Woodland Park to say that I stand with you and defend your right to self-responsibility, to do what you deem important for you and your family. I am not waiting for the pleasure of a governor who does not know how to exercise restraint imposed on governance by U.S. and Colorado constitutions. Strong language reflecting this was in the original resolution, and it changes, and in some of the changes that I have proposed. And as an elected official, I am here to defend your rights as citizens. The best governance is implemented at a local level. We seem to have forgotten this truth as we hold our breath and go through the kaleidoscope of colors of the rainbow, wondering which color the state deems we will dance to next. So, why are we making this unenforceable, no-teeth resolution? Why bother? Let sleeping dogs lie. In a recent meeting of our city staff, I was advised that governor expects us to be out of this pandemic sometime in September. Really? The statistics are in. At ninety-nine point nine, nine-seven percent recovery rate for those of us under seventy and a ninety-five percent recovery rate, recovery rate for those over seventy, I do not buy the Kool-Aid. American frontline doctors have an entirely different scientific take on this. A YouTube search may not find it, but rumble will.
Mr. Zuluaga, I hate to interrupt.
I just about finished, and I, this is going on the record because it concerns me that we are just putting something together that feels good, and you'll get to the rest of my point here in a minute.
Counsel Member Zuluaga, I've given everyone five minutes to speak, and you're now at seven. I would ask that you please wrap this up.
We first consider this resolution based on one passed by the Town of Monument. There were twenty-two other counties across Colorado sitting, considering adopting the resolution like this. Last week, I learned the number has now increased to forty-four counties of the sixty-four counties in Colorado. We do not discuss this in a vacuum. And as a Neanderthal comment from the president, Mississippi and Texas are releasing their citizens to get back to life as normal. All businesses are essential, masked by free will choice. In conclusion, I commend our council for working to bring something to the table for a vote. I will point out that my suggestions to modification of the original resolution were neither considered nor included in what is before council tonight. I do not see that in this revised revision, the courage to stand up for your rights as citizens for the context of how I understand our role as government. Every business is essential, and we need to say so. I do not, I do not just not approve, but I strongly condemn the governor's unchallenged extension of emergency orders from month to month. After a while, it becomes the boy who cried wolf. I do not support executive orders that limit attendance to and free speech in public meetings, places of worship, and sporting events. State authorities might attempt to pressure citizens into compliance. However, I do not understand nor support, as it states in this current resolution, the right of county and state authorities to enforce these pseudoscience public health orders. And the kicker, why would, why approve this revised resolution to state what a city is already doing? I quote what it says in the resolution, "The City of Woodland Park, the City Council of Woodland Park strongly encourages all citizens to follow public health orders and take responsible measures to ensure the health and safety of themselves, their families, their fellow citizens, to reduce the risk of transmission of COVID-19." Oh, please. Haven't we been doing that for the last twelve months? To me, this is not a resolution which is, its very definition is without teeth or force of law, but it's weak in stating your rights as citizens of Woodland Park. There's a battle for cancel culture raging here in America, and I would like to see that we stand up, we make a voice. If we're going to say something in a resolution that has no teeth, that we say something that defends your unalienable rights as citizens.
You're now at ten minutes.
Thank you. Can we please move on, Ms. Labar?
We're going to call the question.
Thank you.
My request is that before we vote on this resolution, that all council members
Resolution.
Arkansas.
Would someone like to call the motion to consider Resolution?
Yeah, I move that we approve Resolution 871, Series 2021, Resolution reasserting the rights of the City of Woodland Park and its citizens and condemning the unlimited use of executive orders being allowed by the Colorado State Legislature.
I'll second it.
Suzanne.
They're muted over there, so she can't.
Suzanne, you need to unmute.
She is unmuted. Can you hear us?
I can hear you, Council Member Alfieri.
Labar?
Yes.
Neal?
Yes.
Pfaff?
Yes.
Zuluaga?
No.
Alfieri?
Yes.
Case?
No.
Thank you. Motion carries four-two.
Thank you. We are moving on now to number eleven on the agenda, reports.
May I point out that it is past nine o'clock for a break? I'm happy to continue if the rest of council would like to. I just wanted to make that noted.
Thank you. Is there anyone that needs a break, or can we carry on with reports?
I recommend we carry on.
I'm fine.
I don't know what's happening in City Hall.
Sorry, Council Member Zuluaga just stepped out for a brief moment. He'll be right back.
Okay. We will carry on, then. I have two events for next week to mention. March 6th, 2020 is the Free Scout Day at the Dinosaur Resort Museum from 9:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., and March 16th is the Chamber Business After Hours from 5:30 to 7:00 p.m. at the courtyard on Highway 24, in the courtyard just off Highway 24 outside of Miss Press. That is where Chamber After Hours will be at 5:30.
And? Ms. Alfieri, I mean, sorry, Stephanie.
Yeah.
Hillary, I'd like to just expound on that a little bit. I know everyone's saying, "Oh, my gosh, there's a foot of snow on the ground and it's freezing cold," but know that the sponsors that are doing the Business After Hours will have propane heaters, Easy-Ups up, fire pits as well. So, we'll have plenty of things going on around there for warmth. So, don't be afraid.
Thank you. All right. Council Member Alfieri.
I will just touch on, in case Council Member Zuluaga is not back in time, DDA had their dedication for the cog car this last Saturday. We found out it is a great place to hide away from the wind. When we got there at nine o'clock in the morning and the wind started to pick up and it was relatively cold, we made a quick move inside, which was great. Everybody that was there got to see the inside, enjoy the inside. It was a great dedication, a lot of history shared, and the process of how it came to be here. It was just a really, really great event, and hopefully looking forward to more people getting to experience it and open it up in the summertime when it's a little bit warmer and less windy out there as well. So, thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you. Council Member Case?
I have nothing. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Member Neal?
I do want to report that on March 1st, we did have the Keep Woodland Park Beautiful Committee Meeting. The first part was pretty benign. They just approved the minutes from the November 2nd, which was the last time they had met. We had a very long break between meetings. But the second part of the meeting was really a presentation by Grace Johnson, who has, were working with the city staff and with Keep Woodland Park Beautiful on the dog poop cleanup ideas. And we have a Woodland Park Scoops campaign that if requested, we can have Grace Johnson come in and give her presentation. We are going down the humorous education path in trying to get in trying to get the citizens to cooperate and clean up after their their family members with four legs. We, the city staff felt the heavy-handed approach of an ordinance would be counterproductive. A lot of people resent it. It would waste a city code enforcement officer chasing ghosts. So the Woodland Park Scoops is creating a social media campaign that's got Facebook, it's got postings on our city website. And I think if people would take a look and read a little bit about the campaign, you'll see how we're trying to be playful in encouraging people to clean up after the dogs. And it more than just the Centennial Trail, which is what started this whole thing, but all across the city is just to remind people, please clean up. And and we may come back to the city staff and ask to put a couple trash cans conveniently located on the trails or the major dog walking areas where people that do take the time to clean up have a very quick place to throw it away. But we're not trying to push any kind of a heavy-handed ordinance type of approach, but a humorous playful kind of theme behind it. And the Keep Woodland Park Beautiful was very, very cooperative in working with the city staff and Grace Johnson. That's all I have to report. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Pfaff?
I have nothing.
Thank you. Councilmember Zuluaga?
Both of our liaison meetings have been postponed so far, both the DDA and Main Street. But I will make a comment about Main Street. There is a student who's doing a, at the University of Colorado School of Public Affairs. They're actually doing a return on investment study on the all across the state of the Main Street programs to see what benefits they are. And they're doing it from a third party, so it's unbiased look at it. So that's coming down the pike and they're asking Main Street members for to fill out a survey to help them with their analysis of that. So that's something we're going to see the impact of Main Streets across communities throughout the state. And that's it.
Thank you. And now to our city attorney and I'm, we have Mr. Wilson and.
Nina, Nina has left. I don't have much to report this time, but thank you all for your vote of support on the new legal services agreement. I'm, we, Nina and I are thrilled and pleased and also apologize for the little technical glitch earlier in the meeting, so.
As it happens.
Guys.
Okay, thank you. We're glad to be working with you. City manager, Mr. Lawson, any, any news?
Got a few things for you. So I want to turn it over to Emily Cat Simples, our finance director, to go over the latest sales tax report with you briefly.
Thank you, Michael, and thank you, city council. Good evening. So included in your packet is the December sales tax collected, of course, in January of this year, twenty twenty-one. So it does, we continue to do well. I do want to note, it looks like a really large number, but we do have a top ten payer that has a twenty-eight day billing cycle. And so this this causes thirteen pay periods in a year rather than twelve every other calendar year. So just to to note that. But, um, you know, if you look, consider what has been happening this year, people are staying at home more not going out, they're buying more groceries and things like that. So I think that helps explain a lot of why we're seeing higher sales tax this this year or for twenty twenty. And that's basically my, my report. If you have any questions, please let me know. Thank you.
I'd like to make a few comments just to share some of those numbers for people out there that may not be looking at this and really give a comparison between two thousand nineteen versus twenty twenty. Total sales tax collected in two thousand nineteen was four million, three hundred and say sixty thousand, just to round up. In twenty twenty, we collected four million, seven hundred and fifty-seven or say four hundred seven, four million, seven hundred, sixty thousand. That's almost an increase of four hundred thousand dollars in sales tax revenue just year over year. It equals a total of eleven percent of an increase from two thousand nineteen to twenty twenty, as well as when you look at the lodging tax and again, with the sales tax revenue, as Emily mentioned, maybe a lot of people are out spending money at grocery stores instead of retailers and restaurants. But when you look at lodging tax as well, which clearly indicates the people that are traveling here and and buying and tourism. In two thousand nineteen, lodging tax revenue was just under over a hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars. And at the end of twenty twenty, we had collected two hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars in lodging tax revenue. That's an increase of sixty-one thousand dollars or a total increase from twenty nineteen to twenty twenty of nine percent. So just for the people out there that are watching this, they're really, as far as revenues go for the city, they they continue to go up and up, not just from purchasing standpoint, from whatever that might be stimulus payments or whatever you might attribute it to. But the lodging tax numbers as well, which really tie very directly to tourism and the people that are traveling here and visiting our area and spending more money. So just wanted to point that out.
Stephanie, I do want to note that this past year, twenty twenty, the Microtall opened.
Yep.
And we were expecting an increase. We also switched to a new lodging rev system that helps us monitor short-term rentals. So we expected to see an increase in twenty nine or twenty twenty over twenty nineteen. So.
Yeah, I'm glad to see that that expectation came true.
I'd also like to point something out. That four million dollar number that's been, that Ms. Alfieri mentioned with regards to sales tax, over two million of that is passed through to the school district. So that's not revenue that's.
It's actually not. That is just our two percent sales tax that I was quoting. It has nothing.
That includes the, you'll look at the expense that pass through that goes to the this, the school district reduces is the offset to that. You recognize a hundred percent of the revenue and then you recognize the expense for the transfer to the school.
If you look.
And it's.
That's it.
It says it, it does not include the city's one point zero nine percent sales tax for RE two right at the top of the page. And the numbers I gave also were not the four ten one percent sales tax. This is strictly just the general fund two percent sales tax revenue.
Thank you. And those numbers are unaudited. I should note that. It's noted in the report, of course. But they are unaudited, so we do, I just have to put that out there because it's, you'll see obviously audited numbers once we complete the audit.
Thank you, Emily. And I know one last.
If I may, Mayor Proton, just a few more things. We've, we've had a request to give a comp plan update from Sally Riley. Sally, would you mind sharing, sharing our progress?
Thank you, Mr. Lawson. And yes, I'm happy to share, we're about six weeks into the process and have been doing stakeholder interviews have begun and will continue. Last Tuesday, we had the department managers have their stakeholder interviews. The civics class at the high school was supposed to have their workshop today. Unfortunately, that was canceled, but will be rescheduled for next week. The, I mentioned two weeks ago that the website had been launched for the project and this week we now have a notice on the front of the city website to help direct people to the comp plan. And once you get to the comp plan website, you're able to take a short survey and we've already had a significant number of people taking this first survey and there will be a total of five surveys, one each month. Then we are also formulating the eight subcommittees that will begin to meet at the end of this month and meet monthly for four months to drill down specific areas and produce the action items. I'd like to mention that Bob Vopley wrote a very nice article in the TMJ this week outlining all that's happened. Thank you.
Thank you, Sally. I, I, sorry, sorry, Mayor Proton, just one or two other things. They're fun things. I promise they're short. We, Councilmember Neil mentioned Grace Johnson. She, she's one of our superstars. Another one of our superstars here on staff is a new addition, Sarah Minton. Sarah is on our Parks and Rec team. She just finished the new rec guide, which I have here in my hand. I don't know if I'm on camera or not. You can find it on the city's website. It's, it's up there now. It was made available at the beginning of the week. We are super stoked to get sports going again. This is a beautiful publication. It's really, it's, it's kind of cute and it's a lot of fun. And it's really simple and easy to use on top of that. So I definitely encourage all the folks out there listening to go and view Sarah's work and sign up for some sports and let's, let's shake the winter blues. I know there's a foot of snow out there apparently the COVID blues, but thank you to Sarah. Thank you to Cindy Keating as well for the great work. And last and definitely not least, thank you to our amazing snow removal crews. Bruce Darrington and his team and Steve Varner and his team have been out there all day having a very long day just trying to keep up with the snow and we, I know we all appreciate them. So thank you to them. That's all I got.
Thank you. And thank you very much to the crews. And there's no further business, so this meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.